Thank you for being here. I'm Joyce Bullock, welcome. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and the Salina Legal Women Voters. It features candidates for Salina City Commission and USC 305 Board candidates. Written profiles by the Chamber and Legal Women Voters on all the candidates are in the back of the room on that table right back there for study. If you would like to pick up a copy, and we do want to apologize, we have misspelled Mark's name on the cover. We put an extra R. So if I call you Bandre, Brodray.
I've been called worse.
Okay, let's clarify that. So if you'd like to pick up one of those packets, they are in the back of the room. Sandy, can we still have plenty back there? If you want one, Ashley would like to raise your hand. I'll bet Sandy would probably bring you one. You can also go to the Salina Chamber's website and also see the candidate information and the Legal Women Voters website as well at LWBSalina.org. And the County Clerk's Office and the Salina Public Library. So don't say we didn't try really hard to get the information out. So the first session will feature the candidates for the USC 305 School Board. And our candidates are Mark Bandre, Bandre, Scott Gardner, Dana Caso, Alan Litten, Roy Lee Miller Jr., Cory Sherman North, and Ann Zimmerman. And there are four open seats for USC 305's School Board this year. And on my left is my good friend Margaret Wyatt from the Salina Legal Women Voters. She's my partner tonight. And Margaret will review the rules because I'm not the rules person, I'm just a friendly person. Rules are what Margaret does. So Ms. Margaret, the rules.
Okay, rules it is. Okay, everything is one minute. We begin with one-minute opening remarks, which I will moderate. Oh, pull it down. Yeah. Got a child person and a media person here. Is that good?
Yeah.
All right. We begin with one-minute opening remarks, which I will moderate. Candidates will alternate, will go down the row, and then we'll start all over again. After the opening remarks, we will have questions from the media panel. Joyce will moderate that. We'll do that until 6:40. In the meantime, the audience should be thinking of questions and writing them on their little pads with the little pencils that are on the seats. And people will come around and get those up, and then a group of folks in the back will look at them, combine them, figure out what we can use, and send them up. And I will then moderate written questions from the audience until about 7:15. Questions should pertain to all candidates. All candidates will be asked to answer each question. Candidates will have one minute to answer the questions. And after that, I think we stopped at 7:15, then we have one-minute closing remarks, which Joyce will moderate. I do want to introduce our timekeeper, Bruce Wyatt and Diana Tarver. Here is what they're going to do. They have three colors: green, yellow, and red. When your minute starts, Diana will hold up the green flag after 40 seconds, the yellow after a minute, the red, and the timekeeper will say stop. Okay? Should we start with the opening remarks? Mark Bandre, you want to pass the microphone down?
Yes. Can I assume it's on? Everybody can hear all right? All right, ready to start now? Folks, as they said, my name is Mark Bandre. It's an honor to have the chance to run for School Board. My wife and family and I have lived in Salina for six years. We're newcomers, obviously, although we lived in Lindesburg in the early 90s, and my wife taught USC 305 back in those years. She and Lynn actually were first-year teachers together, so a lot of memories in that regard. I'm running for School Board because I believe it's important to return to the gifts you have to your community. Again, we've lived in a lot of places, but Salina is where we are now, and I want to help do things for the community. I've really valued the School Board the last two years. I think our current School Board has done a tremendous job. I want to keep that rolling. As far as my personal background, I've spent 31 years working in education, all the private colleges, four of them in Kansas, two in Ohio, and one in Arkansas. I'm a Director of Financial Aid and Director of STRA at Bethany currently, and I feel like with all those years of working in private colleges, I just have a lot of skills that would help benefit the School Board, a lot of knowledge about education. So I appreciate the chance to be here, would appreciate your vote on November 5th, and look forward to the outcome.
Scott Gardner.
I want to thank everybody for coming out. I'm Scott Gardner, grew up here. As a small child, moved here from Kansas City. I am a product of USC 305. My kids are products of USC 305, and I've got grandkids that are beginning their journey through USC 305. So I graduated from here, went to college, football scholarship, and got a degree there, came back, got two degrees, master's degrees from Kansas Westland, and I have five certifications to go along with that. And I think that the thing that I can do for the School Board is add another level of knowledge and bring something to enhance what's already there. So I don't come in with any preconceived ideas or notions. I'm just coming here and trying to help, so appreciate your vote.
Dana Caso.
Good evening. My name is Dana Caso, and my husband and I have been residents in Salina for 25 years. We have three children who attended and graduated from USC 305. Another side note is I come from a civic-minded family. My dad was a city councilman for 32 years, and he showed us the value of getting involved and staying involved. Throughout my children's education, I was a very active parent. I was on the PTA, I was PTA President, I was on every site council at all three schools. I was a part of the focus groups in our schools, and I helped start the school marathon program at Metal Arcory Elementary. I believe it's very important to be active in your children's education and lives. I believe that if I'm going to do something civically, this is exactly where I should be, on the School Board.
Alan Litten.
I'm Alan Litten. I've been here for 10 years, moved here from Hayes. I served on the Hayes City Commission for two years. So one of the reasons why I am running is because I believe that you should be active in your community. And I have, currently I serve as a captain of the Kansas Highway Patrol Training Academy, so I got out of, for 16 years I was a teacher in Beattyville, Kansas. And so I was a teacher, and then I had a midlife crisis and joined the Kansas Highway Patrol. But anyway, I've been involved in education, I've been involved in the schools here for, I've been a guest teacher in the schools, and I believe in education. I believe we're going on the right path. I just want to make sure we keep going that way. Thank you.
Roy Miller.
Roy Miller Jr., retired and retarded. Supposed to be joking. Anyway, this is my first time trying to do something like this. I've just got concerned about the infiltration of biased teaching in schools where they teaching children things that I don't think they should be teaching. I've also got involved with bullying, transgenderism, and political correctness. My son suggested that I do this, so I'm here trying to do something to take and hopefully make some changes.
Cory Sherman North.
Thank you. As a mother of six, now ages 34, down to a Lakewood 13, I've navigated four different state school systems over about many years, marveling at the teachers' dedication to seeing my children thrive. So I do feel it's my turn to give back to my own school system and my own community. I think I can bring my research and writing skills as an art historian to the School Board table, along with almost four years' experience serving on the Board of Directors for the State's Kansas Museum Association. I've learned how boards best function to steward policy changes and legislative advocacy, and also how to manage an annual budget. I do hope to contribute to USC 305.
Ann Zimmerman.
My name is Ann Zimmerman. I am the President of the School Board. I've been on the School Board a little more than four years. I'm the only one of the four board members whose terms are ending who's running for reelection. I grew up in Salina, I went to Heuser and on up through South High, and I got an excellent education. Went on from there to get an elementary education degree from Kansas State in Manhattan, and I had a short career as a teacher in Kansas City, Kansas. Eventually, I went on to get a law degree at Harvard Law School, and I came back to Kansas, first in Wichita, practicing law there, and then in Manhattan, and then back to Salina. My focus is on mediation, helping people to resolve their conflict. Salina schools can always get better, and right now I think the School Board is working together exceptionally well, and I want that to continue. I hope you'll vote for me and for the three other best candidates.
Okay, now to the media panel. I wanted to mention, if you guys want to take those mics out of the stand and pass them, it'd probably be a lot easier. You do not have to leave them in the stand if you'd like to take them out.
These are working pretty well.
Totally your call, whatever you're more comfortable with. I'd like to introduce our media panel. We have Leslie Eichelberry from Eagle Radio, Todd Pittinger rocking in radio, and Charles Rankin from the Salina Journal. And then we should have, we'll have to do questions from the audience a little bit later, but right now we're going to start with the media questions. If you have written a question down, would you please raise your hand so that we'll come and pick up your questions? There we go. And keep your hand up until we get those collected, please. Fantastic. So we will actually start, you're sitting incorrectly, by the way, because now it doesn't match.
We're in a city where our names...
Ideal. So I'm going to do my best to keep it fair. So we will start with Todd Pittinger. Remember, your questions have to be aimed at every single candidate. And we will start with Mark at the end of the table. So Todd, you go first.
Thanks mainly to the voters of Salina and Celine County, most of the people in here. We have some of the best facilities in the state for our schools, for our children, for our children to be successful. My question is, how do we know that our children are successful? How do we judge that? Is it by a standardized test, or what? How do the citizens know out there that we're being good stewards of our schools, doing what we're supposed to do, making our children successful?
Thank you, sir. From the point of view of the School Board, there's multiple ways we have to look at that question. One certainly, mention standardized tests. Those types of things are important. I mean, the State Board of Education requires the administration to monitor such things. Full disclosure, my wife is the district reading instructional specialist for USC 305. She spends a lot of time monitoring how successful our students are at reading. So we have to do those things, and Salina is quite successful in those regards, and certainly a credit to the administration and the teachers, without a doubt. The other thing we can do, and this is part of my goal in this process, is looking at our students being successful contributors to our community. Whether they stay in Salina or wherever they go, I want our students to be successful in their educational aspirations, whether they choose to go to a four-year college, a two-years college, a technical school, pursue the military, apprenticeship, whatever it is they want to do, I want our schools to prepare those students. I think they do. I want our students to be competent, competent contributors to society. So that's two ways of monitoring that success.
You know. No, I think I would agree a lot with what Mark said. For me personally, it's all about goals, ambitions, and dreams. And so each kid is going to be different. And if we take the time to understand what's important to that child, what's important to their parents as far as the parent understanding and making sure that they felt that their child got a good education, I think that's what's important. So I think we just have to find out what's important for the kid, and then show them the options that are available for them, and then strengthen them, equip them, and then let them go.
We are absolutely blessed by the beautiful facility that we do have, and I do think our children are appreciative of that and are taking better care of the schools since we've updated them. I know our teachers feel blessed to be teaching in such beautiful facilities, too. They always were wanting our children to succeed, but I think it's even more exciting watching that our community gave money and backed our school system. There's always benchmarks, and it changes. I think Kansas 105 is what we're looking at now, and we are always doing testing, we are always measuring our children's graduation rate is one way you can tell. We're at 88.3%, I believe, and that's a good number. I think Lynn Exine told me she wants 100%. So maybe when we get there, we'll know for sure we're doing a good job, but I believe our school system is doing an excellent job.
Mark, you got to answer first. You take the word out of your mouth, that's okay. Seriously, again, like Dana just said, graduation rate, I think we need to make sure we have good citizens coming out of our schools, so when they get out into the real world, they are productive citizens. But I like to see our school, again, how we graduate, where they go on from there, can they go to a two-year school, can they go to a four-year school, can they go get a job right away? And that's the biggest thing is do they come back here and are they successful in our city? So there's lots of ways we can look at that, but again, graduation rates, I hate to say it tests, but sometimes standardized tests aren't a real way of looking at that. But again, I think that I want to be good citizens.
You're taking the words right out of my mouth, every one of them. Because I have to agree with every one of them, and that's not the only thing I've got to say. We do have good schools, and we have good teachers, and we have good students.
Of course, I agree with everyone who's already said some very funny words about our school system. We have measurables and immeasurables to consider, the standardized testings that kids have to go through quite regularly. There's other things like parent involvement. We have a very high level of parent involvement, which does help to get our kids learning what they need to.
We do want to have successful students, and we want them to be successful citizens and successful adults. The Kansas Department of Education has given us five standards that we have to measure. And the first one is kindergarten readiness, which is hard for us to control, but we're trying to make connections there because of the kids behind in kindergarten, and they have trouble catching up. The second is social-emotional learning, so that you have good soft skills and ability to manage yourself when you get out. And every high school kid now has to have an IPS, an individual plan of study, so they help focus themselves on the things they need to do after high school. And then we have the graduation rate. We also have to monitor post-graduation success two years out, so we keep track of the kids much longer than we used to. So those are all measurable things. Thank you.
Charles, you're up.
All right. Well, thanks again for having us here. One thing that I really appreciate in the short time I've been here is the partnerships that the school, the district has had with some of the community organizations, with Salina Tech, with Kansas State Polytech, with various organizations around the city and around the community. So what are some current partnerships that you would like to see continue, would like to see grow? And also, what are some other partnerships within the community that you feel like should be developed?
Actually, since I'm not on the School Board, I don't know all the partnerships that we have, so I can only tell you that what we're doing, I think, is working, but we also have to be cognizant and understand that there's so much more that we can do. And so we have to push that endeavor. And what I mean is, I used to be a consultant, and one of the biggest problems that businesses are having are with the children who are choosing not to go to college. But when they're coming out of high school, they're not skilled so that they can actually go to work. And so I think we actually have to continue, and I know the Chamber has done this, they've reached out to local businesses to try to understand what it is that they need. And I think that we have to build on what's already there and identify that so that we can better equip those children who are graduating to have that job and to have those businesses be able to hire qualified applicants straight out of high school.
I am aware of some of the partnerships with the Salina Area Technical College, and there's a lot of regional hall center, and the schools work together for internships. The CNA program is fairly strong in our high schools, which I think is an outstanding program. We are reaping up our culinary program. I would assume Phillips has some kind of relationship with us. I don't know exactly what they do, but I would assume they do. One of the things I heard about this year that I wasn't aware of was that we also offer fire and safety and police. And they actually come to the school and they teach the children, and they come out ready to take that next step and go on and further their education. And to me, that is a gift we're giving our children. We're not just saying you need to learn English, math, and science. We're actually teaching them the skills, anything we can bring into our schools to help them gain a better, stronger life after high school is only going to help us move forward.
Yeah, I was going to talk about the police and fire. I serve on the advisory board at Salina Tech, along with Lynn and several others, firemen and police. That is a very good program. That is something that, of course, is dear to my heart, but also it gives the kids another opportunity to see what, how a fire, how a fireman's job is and what a police officer does, or whatever, law enforcement. Again, I think there's other things we could do. I don't know about the mental health part of it. We need, probably have a little bit of a, we have a lot of kids with mental problems, or not mental problems, but anxiety, whatever, we can maybe team with some mental health experts on that. But I think anything we do, we've got to make sure it's for the kids, whatever we do to help the kids out. So, thank you.
Everything's over, you've been said.
When we moved to Salina about seven years ago, what really impressed us was Salina has its own arts and humanities. And then, when our kids started school, come to find out there's a lot of collaboration. And the kids, for instance, just finished the seventh grade culture crawl for the entire, the entire seventh grade, came downtown, visited all our cultural landmarks, and it's part of a really well-rounded life here. And certainly I'd like to see that continue.
We do partner with Salina Area Technical College. We have, the students can take classes for free, certain numbers of classes, and really, I don't know all the details on that, but we also have pathways in the high schools where your student gets to choose what a pathway to be on and take advantage of classes lined up in the fire and safety and the health services, the food services. I think there's, well, public service, and maybe construction science. We do lots of arts in the schools through the Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation. I get to be a teaching artist that way, I'm a singer-songwriter, so I sing about 60 times in the schools. We also are trying to have better partnership with the community in general. We're going to start working on our strategic plan this year, and we'll have meetings with the community all around the place, so please come out.
I'm particularly pleased with the partnerships that USC 305 has with Salina Tech, with the things these folks have all mentioned. They were right things to do, and many of them are pretty recent developments, so I'd like to find ways to keep enhancing them, keep developing them. I've worked with Greg Nichols at Salina Tech for a number of years when I worked at Kansas Westland and currently at Bethany, trying to find those partnerships. Things I think we need to do together at all of our colleges in the area, as we all know, one of the challenges in not only USC 305 but throughout the state is developing prepared teachers. Salina has great teachers. Just read that in any way. We need to find more, though. We need to develop that pipeline. So what can we do as a School Board, as a district, to help work with the local schools to develop more teachers? Alan mentioned students coming from mental health. I worry a lot about our students that have mental challenges, whatever they might be, and particularly our students that come from poverty. I don't have any answers right now, but what can we do to make sure those students are better prepared to be successful at their given school day? Whether they're coming hungry or without adequate clothing, what can we do to partner with the community to better serve those students?
All right. Leslie, please, you're up, and Dana, you're going to go first.
Thank you. FYI, I am a product of 305 many, many years ago. So anyway, I appreciate y'all having here. If you, assuming you get elected, you're on the School Board, and you could change one thing about the district, what would you change and why?
Okay, that's kind of hard, because I don't want to say that I don't agree with the School Board that is in place right now, but I was very disappointed that we lost our alternative high school. I feel like this is a very large school district. We have over 7,000 students. We have a very diverse group of students, and we needed that school. I hope that someday we can go back to that or reform of that, but I think that our teachers need to feel that they have that place as an option, and our students need to feel like that is a place for them as well.
Thank you, Dana. My, I guess one of my things would be recruiting and keeping the best teachers we can here, retaining them here in USC 305. I think I would like to see us and maybe have a recruiter or something like that to go out and look for teachers, is that the best we can find out in the world. We need to make sure we have a community. Our community is, if we have a good school system, we have a good community. And I think we have a good school system, and we're striving to have a good community. But I think we've got to make sure we can get the best teachers here, and we need to be able to pay them, and make sure they have a, not just pay, but make sure they're appreciated here. It's a big thing to be appreciated, so I thank you for that.
I agree with that. Very, I really agree with, but I'm new here to the Board of Education type thing, so I know that they have done their best and have been doing a good job taking care of things, but I was wondering, I do not know if they go to the schools or not to find out what's happening in each school. So that's one thing that I'd like to take and find out about is the candidates here, as well as the ones who are on the Board, if they go into schools and find out exactly what's going on in the schools and why, and things of that nature. We've got good teachers, we've got good students, and I believe that we're doing a good job, and I think we can do better. Thank you.
I know that Salina's school district is doing an amazing job of coordinating with, I think, 12 other districts for the special education programs. In talking with neighbors, I'm a little concerned about the more recent development to have some of the students that currently are gathered in various schools for various teaching purposes. Kids with autism on the spectrum are gathered and helped by professional experts in the field, and I understand that some of these centralized groupings are going to be split up and have the kids go back to their own home schools, which I am just concerned that we won't have the expertise for each child.
The one thing that I would change would be to have a higher number of staff members, higher diversity of staff members, people of color. Some of the wonderful staff people that we had who were African-American moved away. We have about maybe 15 to 20% of our students that are Hispanic or African-American, and they need to be able to look up and see people who have accomplished things that look like them. And we need to recruit more teachers of color, which of course is a challenge, just to get teachers, the number of teachers you need, but we need to work on getting a more diverse faculty.
It's a complicated topic, obviously, and for me, what I... It's a complicated topic, obviously, and for me, what I would love to find a way to do is somehow enhance teacher compensation. And that's not a new topic, I realize, something Lisa Peters and others have worked on for some time, but part of the reason we struggle to recruit and retain quality teachers is they can make more money somewhere else. So what can we do to think creatively? I don't have the answers now because I'm not privy to all the budget details, but could we find ways, for example, to reduce how much each teacher has to pay towards insurance? Are there ways to be creative out there? My wife, my mother, among my sisters-in-law, and a lot of teachers in my family, all teachers, at least the ones I've worked with, contribute things out of their pocket to help their classrooms. They're spending money of their own to help make the classroom go better. Can we do something with daily budgets to relieve some of that stress from students? So I don't have all the perfect answers, but enhanced teacher compensation would be my goal.
I think there's actually two things that I would look at. It would only be compensation for the teachers and the staff. My daughter was a teacher. That's what she dreamed of doing. She came back, she taught at Head Start and then she taught kindergarten and now she's going to school to be a nurse because she couldn't make enough money teaching. So personally, that's a problem. It's a problem that we need to face and deal with. Secondly, if it wasn't for sports, I wouldn't have gone to college. So I got a free education because I can carry a football. And so I think one of the things that we have to do is do a better job of allowing our kids to get the opportunity for those who needed to get a scholarship to go to college. College is extremely important. I don't care how you get there, as long as you get there. That's the important thing. And every young kid I find, I tell them, well, they might say, I don't want to go to school. I say, go to college on Christmas just for a semester. Get the experience. There's something to be learned there and I think that we need to do whatever it is that we can to give every kid the opportunity to go to school because some schools are very expensive.
Todd.
I know everyone, when they send their kids to school today, they want to know that their child is safe at school. And heck, my wife's a teacher. I want to know that she's safe when she goes to school every day. School violence is a problem. At least it's a perceived problem across the country. Now, I believe our schools are gun-free zones with the exception of the school resource officer. Would you be in favor or allow teachers that want to, to go through the training and conceal and carry in their classroom?
Todd, right by Ali. No, I am not for a teacher carrying a gun. And I know that might sound silly coming from my cock, but no. And the reason why is because when you carry a gun, you have to be really trained. I'm trained really well. Our troopers are trained really well. And to take a life, you have to be able to take a life. The other thing would be, the problem would be, is how are you going to conceal that gun? How, if something would happen in the school, we'd have a, an issue and somebody would be coming out and a teacher would come out and we'd have a law enforcement person there and they see that teacher with a gun, guess what's going to happen? Bad things are going to happen. I do not believe we need, we have school resource officers in, in the building. That's what we need. I cannot believe that we would have anybody in that school, a teacher, make them, or have them carry a gun. Because the training is enormous. I can tell you that, speaking from experience. Thank you.
Very well said, but I believe that if a teacher wants to carry a gun, get the training to be able to have a gun because you can't throw stones at somebody. You have to have something to help prevent something happen. School resource officer can't be everywhere at one time. So like I say, if a teacher wants to carry a gun, make sure that they have the training and the experience and the qualifications to be able to carry one.
I think teachers should absolutely not have guns in our schools. As a parent, I would be so worried every single day that accidents will happen. They have across the country. We've had guns go off in schools hitting ceilings. We've had guns left in bathrooms. Any student could carry off a gun and perhaps use it unwisely. And the teachers are just not trained, as Alan points out. You need it to be trained to act in the appropriate ways with weaponry. And our children are already being traumatized. Studies are coming out that just doing the active shooter drills are starting to affect our kids.
I think we should all defer to Alan Litton on this. I wonder what teachers do with the, with their, if they had a gun, where are they going to keep it all day? I mean, if you're in, in school, kids are nosy. They get into things and, and also, I think it was Alan who said if, if a law enforcement officer is in a school looking for an active shooter and sees a person come out the door with a gun, that's a split second decision that you don't want a law enforcement officer to have to make. Is that the bad guy? Is that the teacher trying to help things out? I think we, our teachers need to teach and not to use their guns to try and protect somebody. Thank you.
This week I was in Billings, Montana for a conference related to my work and it turns out that on Monday, there was such an incident in the schools. The end result was two young men brought airsoft guns to school with them. And apparently every policeman in town was at the high school, which causes other problems, but I do not want our teachers to be armed. And the reason why is the accidents others have pointed out. There's too much risk involved. Our teachers need to teach. We need to find other ways to worry about safety. Todd earlier, you talked about the great job we've done as a community improving our school buildings. Part of that is improving the entrances each at the elementary school, so they're much more secure that way. Those are steps in the right directions where we can empower the schools, empower our parents, of the watchdog sorts of parents that are there in the mornings to make those things be successful. So, again, the Billings situation brought home for me that there's just, there are many other issues involved. We don't need our teachers armed.
Like Alan, I was a former law enforcement officer and unfortunately, there were some officers I wasn't comfortable being around that had a gun. So, to be honest with you, just because they got the uniform on mentally, are you prepared? And that's something that's extremely difficult to teach. So, no, I would not like to have a teacher with a gun even if they've gone through their four or five hour training because you know they're not going to be like they're at the academy. The other thing is, I would say we have to prevent the gun from being in the school. Prevention. It's the same thing in law enforcement. It's all about making yourself visible to prevent the crime from occurring. That's what we want to do. We want to keep it from occurring. We don't want to react to it.
And I agree that our teachers should not be, have yet another thing on their shoulders of carrying a gun in school. However, I think we do have some options and I think it is happening in our school district. Our schools become small communities and these children, when they're brought together and when they have leadership in their school, they will look out for themselves. And so we need to encourage those small communities. We need to encourage the conversation between the children. We need to encourage the children to break the code of silence. We, they're scared and we need to allow them to come to us and be open and honest and listen to our children. I also think, I spoke to Mrs. Exline because my children are a product of this situation. Since my children were in school, we've handled it several different ways. Now we have the run hide encounter and we've left it up to our teachers to make the best decision for the students in their classroom at the time.
I'll just throw in real quick. My wife's father was the commander of the Kansas Highway Patrol. She grew up around guns. She doesn't want a gun in her classroom.
Thank you. Thanks for the video panel. We are now going to take your questions and Ms. Margaret will be in charge of sorting through those.
Okay, I have a number of questions screened by our people in the back and I believe we're starting with Roy Miller. First question is, why do you perceive, what, oh, oh, sorry, the reading person's supposed to put this down. What do you perceive the two greatest problems in our district?
Since I'm not on the school board at the present time, I really can't give you an answer on that. I, I don't, I'd have to be on the school board in order to answer that question properly.
I believe that truancy and absenteeism is a problem in the school district that we'd like to improve. In asking Superintendent Exline to question what's the biggest challenge, she feels that we need more faculty for special education and for those programs.
I think we need to work on graduation rates. We need to make sure that, well, get as close to a hundred percent as possible. We're not there yet. And that means working way back down the line, starting in kindergarten and all the way up and making sure the social, emotional learning happens and make sure the trauma in the child's past is dealt with. The other issue is equity issues, which is related to that, but we are finding, the new Equity Council is meeting and putting together statistics and finding that different groups, the special ed kids and children of color are not achieving as high as the white kids. And that is not because they're not as smart and that is something we need to figure out and how, how to ensure success for all of our students.
Yes, Scott mentioned his educational history earlier. I've been fortunate to have a, earned a master's degree in management and a doctorate in educational leadership. And the skills learned in those, taught me how to help analyze some of the data, some of the things that are out there. While I haven't yet had opportunity to do extensive analysis of USC three oh five data on these things. Two key pieces that we need to work on are ways we can recruit substitute teachers. Right now, it's a challenge when, our teachers need to be out, whether for illness or for training on their own, it's hard to find quality people to fill those seats. And that lessens the quality of education that's going on. I also think the impact of students in special education situations that are behaviorally challenged, the disruption they bring to the classroom presents real problems for learning for all of them, certainly them themselves, but others that aren't causing problems. So what things can we do to enhance training, to enhance skills that improve some of those sorts of situations that are out there?
Based upon the people that I spoke with, funding for special education is, is an area of concern. And as we've talked, salaries for our teachers and our staff is the other area of concern.
I agree with what everyone said, but I have two things that are not huge items, but they're certainly items that I feel are important. And the first one is a good source of communication. I'm not sure we have found that yet. When I bring up peach jar, nobody knows what it is. It's a, it's a form of communication with our parents where we get flyers and we can look online and we can find things. And a lot of teachers and a lot of parents aren't familiar with that system. So I'm not sure our parents are getting the information from the schools that we need. I'm not sure that people are reading the Salina Journal like they used to. So how are we getting communication out to our parents? Kind of easy in an elementary school. It gets much harder with middle and high school. The second thing is, has nothing to do with the school district at all. It has to do with the parents. And as parents, we've got to step up. We've got to be accountable and we've got to quit bashing our school and our teachers on Facebook. Nothing irritates me more than that.
Thank you, Dana. Well, I'm going to go right in with her. That, that is something, bashing our teachers. All we're doing is, is teaching them that it's okay to do, to be little people. And that is, that is not right. It's not right at all. And that's part of the problem with our communities today. I'm sorry, but that's it. And that, that needs to stop. The other thing is, I think that, I, I don't know if you can, you know, I don't, I'm not, because I'm on the school board and I don't know how much money it costs and I, it'd be, have to be able to change it around, but maybe teaching foreign language in the grade school maybe so we can learn foreign language. Because you don't learn foreign language when you're in high school like me. I have three years of German. I can't speak any of it. So, I can speak a little bit, not much. But again, I think if you would have some foreign language, maybe started in the grade school, they could learn it and pick it up and actually be fluent in it. Thank you.
Our next question, please describe your level of awareness and concern for our students' struggles with emotional issues and the impact it plays in their ability to learn. Corey Shumner.
Because I have children in the, the schools, I, I do feel like I make an effort to be aware of what's going on with their friends. A lot of their friends do have difficulties and are, are various medications and it's a little worrying. So I am aware and concerned and I hope that we can get more screening for mental illness into our school system and get more help.
I'm involved in a number of things beside the school board and beside my law practice and beside my music in the schools. I, I work with the Salina Initiative for Restorative Justice and we do parent adolescent mediations, among other things. We do also victim offender cases where we work with juvenile offenders who have to sit, make them sit across from their victims and work out ways to make things right. But the parent adolescent mediation is one where we run into many social, emotional issues that interfere with kids' lives. And we often get these through this truancy program. Now, I don't do them for the Salina truancy kits, but because I'm on the school board. But I also teach Sunday school and it is there, it makes it very hard to teach, even a forty-five minute Sunday school lesson when you have kids with emotional issues. So this is very close to my heart.
My wife and I have two children. Our oldest son is twenty-five, graduated from Baldwin City High School and then Kansas Westland. The younger son graduated from, from Salina South and is now a senior at University of the Pacific in Stockton, California. My wife and I were heavily involved in their education. I, as a parent, I felt that we wanted to make sure they were involved with good coaches. My school dealt with me, so I coached every single sport they did throughout their youth. As a result of that, over the years, I've seen lots of disruptive behavior on basketball court, baseball field, and if they're doing it there with an old guy like me, they're doing it in the classroom too. It's a tremendous disruption without a doubt. Professionally, again, I've worked for colleges for thirty-one years. The number of students that we bring into Bethany, it's not unique to Bethany, but the number of students that come in that have IDPs or five twenty-four plans, unique to their educational development background, just continues to grow. There's no doubt about the fact there's issues. I alluded earlier to poverty and behavioral issues, social, emotional issues. They're there. They are challenges for our teachers. We've got to find ways to help and I hope the school board be a part of that.
Well, I guess oftentimes we have to say things in our popular, so this is my time. There's a book that addresses this and we have to start with a firm foundation. And if we go back and find out where we went wrong, where all of this started to go wrong, I think we can fix it. But you've got to have a foundation. If you don't have a firm foundation, you can be swayed to the left or to the right. The book says, bring up a child and the way he should go and when he gets old, he won't depart. It's, to me, it's really simple. We got to get back to the base. We got to get back to teaching kids what they need to know and hold them accountable for what they do.
That was awesome. Actually, I graduated from a state with a degree in recreational therapy and my people were psychiatric unit for youth. And it was called Cretton and it was a residential facility. So I have a very dear heart for students that struggle. When I volunteered at the school, it wasn't always in my children's class, but it was in the behavior disorder classes at Metallar. One in six children today, ages two to eight, are diagnosed with a mental, behavioral, or developmental issue. That's a lot of kids. Kansas is ranked number eight in the suicide between ages ten and nineteen. We've definitely got a problem and I think our school district is doing an amazing job reaching out. We have mental health facility from Central Kansas Mental Health in our schools. They're seeing kids at school during their day. We have counselors in every school. We just have social workers. I think we're doing a great job because we do more, always. This is, problem's only going to get worse, but I really appreciate what we're doing already.
I, I, I agree with that. One thing about, I, I do have a lot of teachers here also and I get, and a daughter. And they both talk to, tell me about the emotional issues they, they have to deal with. And I, I think it's unfortunate. I'm like Scott, we need to start at home. We need to start holding these kids accountable. That would help a lot. I, you know, we partner with, there's CAPS, you know, that's for child advocacy there, here in town, that teaches young mothers how to be good parents. I think that's important. We can lay that to, to help with that, but help with our school with that. Again, I think it goes back to accountability. Thank you.
Yeah, accountability. We also have to try to understand the problems some of these parents have at home. When you have two parents working, sometimes the kids just don't have any time with their parents at home. So, and I know I have a niece that has, have had some problems because she had to. So, and I know I have a niece that has had some problems because she had to work two jobs trying to raise her children. So we try to understand their problems, hold the children accountable, and also try to keep some of these kids off of the cell phones.
Okay, here's our next question. Bureaucracy is a terrible drag on education and teaching. What will you do to minimize the impact of bureaucracy on putting money where it belongs in the classroom? Anne?
We have what we, well, we have pie charts. We have what we call the apple pie chart, which is an apple divided up into triangles to say how much of our money goes into the classroom. And it's about, it's a great majority of the apple. So if you, you could say that the bus drivers aren't there, but you know, if you can't get the kid to school, you can't get them to learn. But all the teachers, the parents, the janitors that make sure the place is good enough to have a school day, most of our money does go into the classroom. And there are, there is money that is spent on administration, but that helps to keep things moving and working. And I think we're doing pretty well in that. We could always improve though. Thank you.
Going back to our very first question, we talked about standardized tests and their reality in our society. For better or for worse, bureaucracy is a reality in our society these days, and we're not going to get rid of it by any stretch. What we can do, though, is continue to hire the best people to help administrate it. I appreciate the way Dr. Hardy handled things, I appreciate the way Ms. Exeline is handling the staff. We have good people leading the charge here, and we have good teachers. We just need to keep on empowering them to deal with the adversity our society brings. Many of our questions we've dealt with today, even going back to whether we should arm teachers or not, they all deal with politics and bureaucracy and how our society chooses to handle all these different things out there. Again, we need to prepare our students to be confident, competent contributors to society. We need to emulate that at home. And just, again, I appreciate Scott's answer earlier, too, was perfect on those regards. What can we do to help minimize bureaucracy? We're not going to minimize it. How do we deal with it? I think that's the things we can effectively do from the school board.
I think the way we tackle this is we have to understand that bureaucracy exists, as Marcus said, and every business has its challenges. We have to be innovative and find a way to get through this. One of my certificates, I have a black belt in innovation engineering. We got to start thinking differently. And in my current job, the biggest challenge I have is working with adults and trying to teach them to think differently. China's not smarter than us. They think different. And so all we have to do is learn to challenge what it is that we're doing and understand that the only limits that are placed on us are the ones that we place on ourselves and the same ones that we place on our kids. We can do anything if we put our minds to it.
I actually think we're doing a really good job. Most of the money we get goes towards our people. 90.5% of the operating budget goes directly back towards our students. I sat down with Lisa Peters because I don't understand a budget this size. And I am blown away by how talented she is at explaining the budget, how much information she must keep and continuously learn about our budget. And I feel like we've got the best person in charge of that to lead us down the way. And so I'm going to follow her lead.
My last point. All right. Okay, bureaucracy, yeah, I know what it, we all know what it is. I think the biggest thing right now, and I think we're doing a good job here at USD 305, is you have good leadership and you can fight through the bureaucracy, and that's about all I have for that, so.
Well, bureaucracy, politics, everything comes into play. Sometimes you have to skim over the politics, get rid of the politics to try to run the school. Sometimes that's kind of hard to do. Hopefully, we can see our way through it.
I don't really have much to add to this question. From what I can see, I'm fairly impressed with the efficiency of the school board in getting things done.
Okay. Mark will start with this one. Would you be willing to reduce funding for athletics and direct it instead to a gifted, talented program?
You know, several years ago, when my son, my youngest son, was a freshman sophomore in school, my son played soccer. He was the goalkeeper on the state championship soccer team, so go Cougars. But, so athletics is important to me, I mentioned coaching earlier, but my point was, back then, students had to pay $100 a year, I think it was a year, to participate in athletics. And that was part of the way we helped balance the budget. That went away recently, and I'm not privy to all the budgetary reasons why, but we need to do both is the bottom line. I think there is very definitely a place for athletics in our community. It helps to build a community, both at South Central and Sacred Heart, for that matter. We need to have those students get the possibilities. And Scott's athletic scholarship is one of many. My younger son is a goalkeeper at University of the Pacific now. It's part of the way we're paying for it. So those are our places, but my son also has never had a B in his life. He's a 4.0 student in high school and in college. He relies on his South teachers for that. We need to fund the gifted and talented programs, too. So no, I would not take one to route the other, but we're going to have to find the balance to serve both.
I agree, no, I would not take the money away from the athletic program. No way. I got a free education because of that, so. And my mom couldn't afford to send me to college. I think she may have given me $50 the whole time I was at school, so no, we have to find a way to make it work. And I think that we can.
I agree with Scott, but I also believe that the athletic departments bring some of their own money in. So I don't think we're comparing apples to apples. So I think that both are extremely important. We need to support both, and we just need to keep doing what we're doing right now.
Yeah, you're talking to an old football coach here. So Scott's right. I saw a lot of kids when I was a teacher that played sports or they were in the band or whatever, and that's, that's the reason why they're there, and they're ready to graduate and go on with their lives and become professional citizens. But I think a lot of, Dana just talked about this a little bit, but fundraising, I think you can have a balance. There's fundraising in your, some of your sports, they do a lot of fundraising, you know, they sell cards for $20 each, you know, we buy that. I think we can support it that way also. But I do believe that education is number one, even though I'm an old football coach. Education comes first to me. I can tell you that. But again, sometimes sports is a big thing for schools because participation from the kids.
Me, I'm going to have to agree on that. I never was in athletics when I was at school because I went to Chicago, many different schools, being a military grad. But you have to have your athletics because it does bring in the money. But you also have to have, have the help for the gifted students also. But there's also art and music that should be able to be added to also.
At an earlier forum at the NAACP, one of the audience questions was, why is there not enough gifted programs in the north area of Salina? I'm afraid if it came down to a question of funding and taking money from athletics and moving that to improving the educational opportunities in parts of our county, I would do it.
I don't think we need to have it in either order. It needs to be both. We mentioned bringing in outside money for athletics, which they mainly do for their, well, they do that for their program, like football program that you get when you go to a game and they get ads for that. We declined to take ads for the schools and the classrooms. Didn't seem like a good idea. And so we have to find other ways to get money for our classrooms unless advertisers, I mean, unless funders are willing to give it to us without putting their names on things. But our AP classes, advanced placement classes, they serve as gifted and talented programs, although there's more to gifted and talented programs than AP classes. But there are many ways for the gifted kids to find outlets in our schools.
Scott? Is the USD 305 salary structure top-heavy? If you think it is, what's your remedy?
I have no clue what the structure is. But I would presume until much is given, much is required. And so they're in the position to do a job. They should be compensated for doing that job.
I agree with Scott, and when you think about it, we're responsible for Early Learning Center, eight elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, and we co-op, we sponsor with the co-op Head Start, Salina Adult Education, over 7,000 students and 3,300 staff. That's a lot. So whoever's in charge of that should be compensated very well.
I agree with that. When you have a, you have a good superintendent, you need to pay him because there's a lot of things that they do that we don't even know about. I mean, the department is the finances, things like that, and you don't have a very good superintendent, if you don't pay him, you're going to get what you get for the pay. So I'm, I think that, I think, I'd like to see everybody paid the same, but that's not how it is. You have more responsibility, the higher up you go, the more responsibilities you have. And so you need to pay them for that, because in the business world, you're going to get paid for doing that job.
I have to agree with that. The more responsibility, the more you do, the more you deserve, just like in your athletics, if you have a bad coach, you're going to get rid of that coach. You have to pay that coach if you want to get a higher, higher amount.
Yes, I believe you do have to pay for expertise. And I certainly would just hope that we can raise the rest of the teacher's salaries to be a little closer.
I know more about the salary schedule for just the teachers, the beginning teachers versus the very experienced teachers than I do about the whole, off the top of my head, the rest of the salary schedule. But we had a big discussion about the, whether we should give an equal percentage to the teachers across the board this year. And we didn't, well, we were trying to raise the starting schedule, the starting salary up to get more good beginning teachers, but we didn't want to take money away from the experienced teacher because they're the experienced teachers. And if they're still here, that probably means they're really excellent teachers. So we tried to spread it evenly across the board, but I think more than half our teachers are in the top half of the salary schedule, have a lot of experience.
I do not think our salary structure is top-heavy. I think it's done appropriately. I'm glad Anne brought up the teacher's salary schedule, though. I think there's some ways to tweak that. I'm a little bit biased here, my wife has a doctorate, there isn't a doctoral place on our salary chart. So I think there's ways we could help encourage our teachers to get more education by whitening the chart a little bit. And that's where we rely on Lisa Peters, who is appropriately compensated because of what great work she does. And as these folks have said, the more responsibility you have, the more you should make for sure. But I do think there's potentially some tweaking we can do on the salary chart to just enhance education in those things.
Okay. You're passing? You started. The answer is done.
Yeah.
Most students, most citizens have no children in school. How would you propose USD 305 keep them informed and connected to their schools?
I think that's a very important piece of the puzzle, and I do think the communication I mentioned earlier is a key part. We have to get people in our schools. One of the things I'm probably most proud about that I've done here in Salina is started the school marathon program over 16 years ago in our elementary schools. And while the design of that program was not to bring community to the school, it was to keep, get kids running, it actually became a big focus. And now, any given fall, when you're running around this town and see people out running, you will see grandparents, you will see community members, you will see brothers and sisters. And so to me, anything we can do to get the community involved, and they're not always people who have kids in that school. I've seen people and I've spoken with people who love the program so much, they go out on their front porches and watch the kids' room in the morning. So I think anything we can do to bring community in is, it's what we should be doing. That's the whole idea behind this.
My grandfather, a long time ago, told me, he said, and he didn't have, that's when we were grandkids, whatever, he didn't have kids in school, but he always supported schools. And he said, "That's the most important thing you can do, that's your future. The kids coming out of there are the future of our new communities." And I think the school does a good job. They have a newly updated website here that people can get on and they can find out what's going on in the schools. So I think that's a good thing. So there's ways we can promote ourselves, and we need to bring in the people that, that don't have kids in school, but they're still important. This is community. It's everybody, not just the parents. So we can all help do that. Thank you.
Football, baseball, all school activities. If you advertise them out to the community, out to the businesses, then hopefully, you'll probably be able to get more, more out of the community. Because a lot of these people will follow the activities of the football and baseball. And of course, you may have these guys that go out there and say, "Hurrah, hurrah for Cougars," and you obviously have the other team.
Wouldn't it be nice if on the front page of the journal, there was a section for school system news regularly, at least once a week, and not just the special events, the everyday things? We could also do that perhaps on the radio, regular little school corner.
I think we need to emphasize to the community what of value a good school system is to the community, whether or not you have kids in the schools. I don't have kids, but if I, if our schools weren't any good, young families wouldn't move to town. And those families keep the businesses strong, they buy things, they, and they work places, and they, they grow the businesses in both of those ways, by spending and by working. They help the economy, they make us more active and less, a growing older and older community. We need to fight the brain drain of all the young people leaving, and we need to get them to come back and, and bring their children with them. And those are all wonderful things for our community, and we need to emphasize that.
By show of hands, how many of you in the room graduated from USD 305? So while folks may thank you, while folks may not have children in school directly, all of these people that have graduated from school and come back here to be involved are the results of these things. The fact that James Vought, a USD 305 product designer for city commission, is a testament to these things. But Scott, Anne, Leslie are all graduates. The things that we can, and again, all you folks that raised your hand, the more things we can do to trumpet those people's success, the more we can do to help people understand, hey, you may not have your child, your grandchild in our schools, but we're all contributing to the community. This is our plumbers and our electricians, this is our healthcare providers. All these people have the opportunity to be contributors to our society because of the job our school system does. So the more we can trumpet those things, the more we can help people understand that, hey, our schools are making Salina a great place to live, and the kids that are in school now are going to be doing that really soon. We need to just help trumpet that success out there.
I think we have to give everybody an opportunity, let them know that there's an opportunity for them to get involved or stay involved. When I came back from playing football, I started coaching kids to play football, tackle football, flag football at the Y. And the skills that I was taught here carried me through. And so it's just an opportunity for me to give back, and I think that's the way that we keep people involved, is we let them know that there is a place for them to be involved. You know, those who are moving to our city that don't have kids, they don't know how they can get involved. And so I think we just need to let them know that there's an opportunity for them.
We don't really have time for one more question, if we all go a minute. So let me suggest to the timekeepers that we do 40 seconds. So 20 seconds on green, 20 seconds on yellow. Alan gets the last question. Do you believe students should help play a larger role in shaping their schools? If so, how? If so, how?
Yes, I think that we need to keep lines of communication open to them. We need to make sure that we allow them to have some voice at what kind of classes they would like to take. I mean, there's, we have to teach the core classes, but if they have some input, I'm willing to listen to that. Everybody should be willing to listen to input from the kids. The kids are why we're here. That's why we opened the school door, is for the kids. So they need to have a little bit of input. Sometimes they don't know what's the best for them. I understand that. But again, I think we need to have, they need to have a little bit of input, and they need to have buy-in in their schools.
Most definitely. It happened to me in school. I wanted to have a certain class, and they wouldn't let me have it. Anyway.
I absolutely believe students should have input into their schools and what they do in them. I've spoken to Superintendent Exline about starting kind of a listening forum within the school day, maybe once a week, once a month, just to listen and see what kids are thinking about their classes, their, their home lives, whatever comes up. I'm very excited to see some South High School students here today getting involved, and I've been invited to speak to their new politics club next, next week and talk about campaigning and school board issues.
Yes, students should have a voice. I remember being a student and being asked for, for opinions, and I always kind of wondered what I was doing, but I have more opinions now. But there, there are students on the Equity Council, there are student members from both the high schools, and there are students on the high school site councils, and there are, well, and Ms. Exline is talking about starting a student advisory council for herself to keep herself involved in those, or informed about what the students are thinking.
Yes, they certainly should. I assume everybody did, but I received an email earlier this week from the editor of the Salina South newspaper wanting opinions. So appreciate that, they're reaching out. By the way, they didn't do that two years ago when I ran, so that's a step in the right direction. I know Dr. Stevens at Salina South does a great job asking for student opinion to the student government. I mentioned my older son graduated from Balden City High School. We have a lot of connections in Lawrence where Mr. Brumhard has just come from. A lot of folks think really highly of him at Salina Central, and there's another Salina successful, they're coming back to help us out. I read things there. I believe those gentlemen are both listening to students. I'm really pleased they are and hope to keep on doing those sorts of things.
Yes, they should play a role or have a voice. And I think the way we do that is by listening to them and encouraging them to speak and tell us what's on their mind because that's part of the maturation process.
If you want to know what's happening in your schools, talk to your kids because they will tell you. And I believe that kids want to tell you what's going on and what they think. When I was growing up, I felt like student council seemed to be a little bit more about the leadership of the school. I'm not so sure that's where we're at today, and so maybe we could work on getting back to a stronger student council in every school where the kids feel like they really do really true have a voice.
Joyce will moderate the final remarks. Closing remarks.
Again, you have one minute, and I think we'll just start with Alan since we just finished with Dana. Let's just keep rolling, okay?
Well, first of all, thank you for, everybody for being here, and thank you for having me here. Every, every morning, I go to work and on my desk is this Kansas Hall of Patrol Core Values. There's ten things here. The first thing is on here is integrity. That is something that I bleed in full-heartedly, and I, I strive every day to live by integrity. I think it's a very important thing. The other thing is, I would, I'm, I would like to have your vote on November fifth. I think it's very important that I, I will be a good listener. I will listen to both sides of the issues, and I will make an informed decision. Thank you for your time.
This is my first time up here trying to run a public office here. Don't know if I'm, hopefully, I'm qualified for it in some way, but I'm willing to learn. This is the first time in politics, competing in the Hall of Politics, and I'm willing to try to do, do what I can to help out. I have, I'm not a graduate of 305, and I never went to school here. But I had to school hard as a doctor, going around, going around the world and everything else. So hope that and get a chance to improve something here.
Thank you. I do hope to further the mission of USD 305, providing a high-quality equitable education for all, applying my current experiences as a parent, as a researcher, and as a board member. My efforts would be focused on how best to offer learning to each and every student to help rise to their potential and participate successfully in our communities.
I want to first thank the Legal Women Voters in the Chamber of Commerce. I know exactly how much work it takes to put this on. I am the vice president of the Legal Women Voters, and I'm happy not to be having to do the floor of this chair. But thank you for all the work that it takes. And thank you all for coming. I want you to vote for me, Anne Zimmerman, but I also just want you to vote, and I want you to get all your friends and neighbors out to vote because there's a lot of people who are thinking they're not voting, that they don't think it's viable. I want to mention that on your ballot, there's going to be a constitutional amendment, which we can't go into here, but you should get online and figure out what that is because it's, it might be a surprise to you when you get your ballot, and there it is. So thank you again for coming.
I want to echo the thanks for those that are here today for taking the time to come and for those that are listening at home as well. I also want to thank Nadra, Gary, and Carol for their time on the school board. I might, in my opinion, have done a great job, and Anne as well. I believe I'm qualified to serve in this position, as someone who sent two children through school, who's worked for thirty-one years, who has doctorates and a doctorate in leadership positions. I think I've developed the skills over the years to help be a good listener, which is what the school board needs. I believe in collaboration, and we saw a time in the relatively recent past where the school board didn't collaborate all that terribly well. Let's not go back there. Let's make sure we have the best four people added to the three that are staying so we continue to work together, work with Ms. Exline and the student body and our teachers to put forth the best possible product we can. I appreciate your vote, and I appreciate you voting for sure on November fifth.
I think we all want you to vote for us, so. One thing I want to make clear, I'm a product of USD 305. I, I went to school at Harpoon Elementary School, which is on the north end of town. Nobody had very much. So we learned to work for everything. USD 305 gave me an excellent education. It is a great school district. It's always been a great school district. So let's make sure, even though the questions we've had on how to improve it, it's been great. It is great. We're going to try to make it even better. But what it gave me was a firm foundation educationally. I went to college, and college was easy. It was really easy to me, especially because I only had class on a certain day, Fridays we didn't have class at all. I think that the USD 305 has done a great job, has always done a great job, and I think it will continue to do a great job.
I was welcomed to this school district by Marcy Rock, who I adore, and a great staff at Metal Arc Ridge Elementary. I was encouraged to be an involved parent, and I continued that way through my children's K through twelve education. I would hope that as a school board member, I would also be welcoming to new community, community members, new parents, and also be there to help encourage parental involvement. I believe one of my strengths, as many of my friends would say, is I can get you on board for something. If I want three hundred kids to run around the school, I am going to work my tail off to make that happen. So I believe that I could be a person who would hear things and get involved and reach out to the public and communicate those ideas. And it's a big election. We have four seats open. We're losing some very, very dedicated and longtime school remitters. If I'm elected, first, I will be humbled and thankful that you voted for me. Second, I'll be willing to learn from the people who are currently in office who know what's going on. And lastly, I hope I bring some new energy.
Candidates, thank you for coming. We'll take a break until seven thirty.